Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk. Please call the role to establish a court of.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ashby is expected momentarily. Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang is expected momentarily. Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back to the council. I know we've had a couple of weeks where we have not met. Everyone, of course, working very hard nonetheless. But we begin now a series of weeks. Today is relatively light, but it's going to pick up as we get deeper into the fall. And let us get going, begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, actually, since climate is the main issue of the day. I wanted to ask Jennifer Venema and I see Jennifer Donald White as well, if you would both consider leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Extremely happy to, Mayor.
More than happy to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you starting our meeting in the right way here. Let us begin. We have two special presentations today. First of all, recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg. And given the importance of this week, we have the great honor of being joined by Chairman Tarango from the Wilton Rancheria. So I'd like to be a little unorthodox and let him start, if that's okay with you, Mayor.
That's okay with me. Go, go.
Great, thanks. Welcome, Chairman.
Kuchihaima and Magisha Tuka. Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Might have had a, might have had a small delay. But Kuchihaima, Magisha Tuka, Kene Oyaset, Jesus Tarango. Good afternoon. My name is Jesus Tarango, and I'm the chairman of Wilton Rancheria. And I just want to start off by saying it's an honor to be here, being the only tribe, tribal federally recognized tribe within Sacramento County. It is truly an honor, especially with the timeframe of what things are, what's going on this week. So I prepared a small statement that I would like to read and definitely follow up with a few words. But I would like to begin by thanking Councilmember Katie Valenzuela for her outreach and invitation to be here this afternoon. Thank you all for welcoming me to speak on a subject that is near and dear to me. I would like to take this opportunity to address the resolution being brought forth by the Sacramento City Council to confirm the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, effectively abolishing Columbus Day as a day of celebration. The resolution to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October is an opportunity to change a long-timed false narrative and to instead validate the history, lived experiences, and existence of Indigenous peoples. My people and thousands more in the city of Sacramento have survived and thrived despite what you can only describe as genocide. Boarding school trauma, forced removal, relocation, termination, and here we stand, addressing leaders of diverse communities in my language and on my people's ancestral homeland. That is something to celebrate. It is important to acknowledge that we choose the second Monday of October to celebrate as our indigeneity and honor our ancestors, but also to regain agency of our own narrative. We have been here since time memorial, and we will always be. And so that is the small statement that I prepared. But I do want to also say again, as I said in the beginning, it's an honor to be here. I know recognizing this day is one step, but the real work comes, how do we celebrate it? And what does it mean to Indigenous people? I think it means something different to all of us. We all see things differently. The optics of what we celebrate and what we see is different. So again, I think that the start of having this day is a beautiful thing, but the real work's going to come probably right here with the city council, because I really truly believe it's on our Indigenous people who have to say what it is that we want. What do you want? What do you want to see? How do you want to participate? And so I'm coming here and saying that I'm fully committed to helping bridge that gap. And Wilton Rancheria, you know, we're building something amazing a little bit down the way from Sacramento. And so I know that the future looks bright for the city of Sacramento and for us. And again, I'm just here saying I look forward to our future relationships and bridging those gaps between our communities. Tanga Komu.
Thank you so much, Chairman. And it's really our honor to have you here. So thank you so much for taking time out of a very busy schedule. I'd like to just offer a couple of comments. And then I know my colleague, Councilmember Guerra, might have for some comments and introduce our second guest. But I will say that I did get your resolution today. I'm sorry I didn't get it to you in person. The clerks did a great job, and I'll be delivering it to you and your family and your tribe later this week in person. But I just want to say that something that not everybody knows is that I am a Native American council member. We don't know what tribe we're from. We were relocated. Our records were destroyed. We were removed from the rolls. And this is a story that's very common of a lot of people here in Sacramento, across California, across our country. And really, I say that to speak to the current impact, the historic impact and the current impact of colonization, and why it is so important, as the chairman said, for us to take time, not just to recognize this day, but to reaffirm our commitment to recognizing that history, to teaching that history, so that we don't repeat those past mistakes and that we work hard to ensure that we're doing all we can to make sure our tribal communities have everything they need to be healthy and successful and that we are good partners, government-to-government partners, to someone like the Wilton Rancheria, who is our sister government here in Sacramento. So with that, I'll pass it over to my colleague, Councilmember Guerra. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. And thank you again, Chairman Tarango. It's a pleasure to have you here, to have your leadership here. And it's also a pleasure to welcome another great leader in our community here, and that is Britta Guerrero. And, you know, one of the things that, that it's important about this is not just celebrating it as a day where, you know, we're with family, but to recognize the long-term historical impacts to the communities. Those are health impacts. Those are economic impacts that for generations have continued. And none other than our executive director and our leader here for, from the Sacramento Native American Health Center have been fighting to rectify those, those longtime generational impacts to our Native American community. And not just to the Native American community, but to other disenfranchised communities. You know, the, what I've seen that the leadership of our tribal leaders, you know, Chairman Tarango, Britta Guerrero, and even growing up myself in Yolo County with, with the, my classmates who are from Yochidihi, Winton, they now continue to contribute and try to stop the issues of health impacts, housing insecurity, and addressing those issues. And Britta Guerrero here has been one of the leaders recognized throughout our Sacramento region during this last year during COVID, where the Native American community disproportionately had the higher number of deaths because of COVID. Not only were they making sure that while access to clinics were closed, that people were getting their primary care, but ensuring that we get into and addressing those, the very needing education of testing vaccinations to all communities. So let me welcome here our great leader, Britta Guerrero. From the warrior to the war, the warrior to the warrior here.
Thank you so much. Shakia Tagote, Britta Guerrero, Gonsay. Thank you, relatives. My name is Britta Guerrero. I currently serve as the CEO of the Sacramento Native American Health Center. I'm a member of the San Carlos Apache Tribe. And first, I'd like to extend my gratitude to the council for inviting me to participate today. Second, I'd like to thank Chairman Tarango and his people for allowing me to live and work in his homeland. As a Native woman from an out-of-state tribe, I have been blessed 10 times over to be in this space. Today and every day, we honor Indigenous Peoples' Day and movements that advocate for the betterment of the planet and all of its inhabitants, because we know what's good for Indigenous people is good for all people. We live to honor, defend, and protect the homelands of our people and our ancestors. We support Indigenous-led and community-based solutions that our ancestors have modeled for us for generations. We understand our responsibility to our community and to the future generations of our people.
Take your time.
Our children, both yours, the people of Sacramento, and ours, who will inherit these modern-day problems. The responsibility is not ours alone, because our future is a shared one. The detriments that we, that we face as a result of colonization, systematic oppression, and structural racism affects all of us together collectively. So more than proclamations and more than land acknowledgements, we ask that you, as the city council, take action. We ask that you challenge the various systems that exclude and disenfranchise Indigenous people and people of color, including healthcare, education, housing, employment, and the myriad of social services overseen by the council. When Indigenous people and stakeholders of color are not represented, critical knowledge and solutions are often overlooked. When we are engaged, we understand that we have a responsibility for your future too. We appreciate you taking the time to hear what we have to say and inviting us today. Thank you very much. Ashu.
Thank you very much, Britta. And I don't know if Morningstar was able to join us. I know she was in adjoining efforts at Nalca Trask. But if she is on, please feel free to come on camera. And again, and I know technology's been difficult for us here, but I do want to thank Britta again on, in bringing up the issue of education. You know, the, the former DQ University is one of the universities that helped my mother get her AA degree and helped so many in the rural area in Yolo County. Councilmember Valenzuela, I don't see Morningstar with this.
I do not either. And Morningstar was going to present on behalf of Restoring Justice for Indigenous Peoples. I will say, though, to Britta's comments, that item 24 on our agenda today is a direct result of the conversations we've been having with Morningstar and others about better supporting Indigenous youth. So hopefully, this is just the beginning of many conversations we'll have about partnering with our tribal community moving forward. So that's all for us, Mayor, I think.
Thank you so much for your partnership.
Thank you. Who, let me just see. Do we have any other, any other members up here? I want to thank Councilmember Valenzuela for bringing this forward, Mr. Chairman, and Britta, Dr. Guerrero, you for being here today. As the city embarks on its mission to achieve or get closer to achieving genuine racial equity, and as we launch our ad hoc effort, Councilmember Vang being the co-chair of this committee, we will only get better if we acknowledge and reckon with our past. And that's where the importance of Indigenous people are so crucial to our understanding of what led us to such massive inequities in our society and in our, and in our city here today. And so Councilmember Vang, I know, suggested that we start, you know, every future ad hoc equity meeting with acknowledging and recognizing the terrible injustices that were done to Indigenous peoples and continue in some ways to this day, at least the remnants of, of those policies. And so this is important, and I want to really thank you for reminding us, always reminding us, and allowing us to be with you today. All right, thank you. Let us, let us move to the next presentation. Shows the varied response. Yes?
Thanks, Mayor. I think this, is this the code enforcement, right?
Yes, this is the code enforcement. Yes.
All right. Well, first, let me just say what a great honor to have the chairman and Ms. Guerrero with us. That was a really neat and wonderful thing, wonderful way to start the meeting. So I have all the feels now. Thank you for being here, Councilmember Valenzuela. Thanks for bringing it forward. It's really cool. Glad we did that. Okay. Also, I just wanted to show you guys, look at the cool new resolution folders. They're black. They've been blue for, I don't know, as long as I've been here, so 11 years. Doesn't it look so nice? Extra fancy. It is my job today, Mayor, to recognize Code Officer Appreciation Week. I'm going to guess that this, this says, you know, that the California State Legislature, I'm sure that was you, Mayor Steinberg, at some point proclaimed the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. So I get to ask Peter Lemos, who leads our Code Enforcement Division, to come on to our call here, say a couple of words, and then I will share this resolution. Is that all right, Mayor?
Of course.
I know he wants to speak first before I read the resolution. So Peter, are you with us there somewhere?
I am. Can you see?
All right, go for it.
All right. First of all, thank you, Mayor, and city council members. Thank you for the first presentation. Also, me being the Native American here, working for the city, that was a great presentation. I appreciate the opportunity to recognize the city of Sacramento's code compliance team in celebration of Code Enforcement Appreciation Week. It is important to acknowledge that the complexity of code enforcement passion, profession has grown over the years. Code enforcement officers here at the city of Sacramento and throughout the state have a challenging, demanding role. Code enforcement plays a vital role in maintaining and improving our quality of life for residents and visitors to our city. We provide safety, health, and welfare to our city by enforcing local, state, and federal laws, dealing with issues of building, zoning, housing, environmental, business, health, and life safety. The past two years seem to have brought about an unprecedented and unpredictable issues created by the pandemic, civil unrest, our unhoused population, and new codes and laws to be enforced. But night, but my team continues to be resilient, dedicated, and adaptable. I am proud to work for such an amazing team that continues to work on providing a clean, safe, and vibrant city for all to enjoy. The code enforcement profession is a thankless job, but we continue to provide necessary services. Our goal is to always generate voluntary compliance by educating residents on our code requirements, working in collaboration with community leaders and vital stakeholders. I want to thank all code enforcement officers, dangerous building inspectors, and our administrative support. It takes the entire team to be successful. Thank you, council member.
Thank, thank you, Peter. First of all, dang, I'd like to take credit for how well we planned that one with Peter being Native American, but it's just pure coincidence. However, we look brilliant now. Thank you for that, Mr. Lemos. Yeah. And he is, he really is. That's a superstar in the city of Sacramento, Peter Lemos. And I don't know what it is about code enforcement, but for the last, for as long as I've been here, there have been absolute superstars in charge of code enforcement. And we're very lucky, because they take care of all those building inspections and so many things that are invisible to our constituents behind the scenes, but so critically important for safety. And I would just like to read a little bit of the resolution, Mayor, so that we can properly honor all of our staff in code enforcement. You know, they are charged with safety, health, and welfare of citizens for the city of Sacramento. They do local enforcement of state and local and federal laws, all dealing with various issues around building, zoning, housing, environmental health, and life safety. They have the challenges and demanding roles that don't often receive the recognition they deserve for the job they do. Sometimes it's really dangerous, too, especially when we send them into dangerous buildings to do code enforcement there. The role of the code enforcement officers has really expanded in recent years with jurisdictions increasingly relying on the expertise, knowledge, and training of code enforcement officers. And that's definitely true in the city of Sacramento. Code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals who strive to prevent neighborhood deterioration, which is what we talk about every week. How do we get in front of it, right? Prevent the deterioration, enhance the communities, ensure safety, and preserve property values through their knowledge and their training. So we're just really proud of our employees always. And today, we get the special privilege, thanks to the legislature, to recognize code enforcement. So, Mr. Lemos, we appreciate you and every member of your team. Thank you so much for all that you do. Mayor?
Thank you. I'm glad you brought this for code enforcement is a crucial part of what we do as a city. It sits, it's the essence of clean and safe, as we talk about all the time and as we'll continue to talk about. You have a very important job, and we honor you today. Thank you, Mayor Protem Ashby. Thank you, Director Lemos, for your service.
Thank you, sir.
I should have asked, Madam Clerk, whether there's any public testimony on either of the last two items. I guess not, not for special presentations. Okay. Let us now move to the consent calendar.
Mayor, I, I just had a brief comment for.
Oh, please. Yes, go, go.
You know, I also recognize how vital our code workers are in the city of Sacramento. It's fair to say that we all call on them regularly. And, you know, it's my feeling that, that we could afford them more staff to do their work. They're chronically understaffed for the workload that we give them. And I hope that we can bring that discussion forward at a more appropriate time.
Very good. Look forward to that, too, Councilmember Harris. Anybody else? Okay. Well, now move to the consent calendar. And I know we have a special guest here with us today. A former city council member, now our state assembly member, Kevin McCarty, who I'm just going to say it, is delivering big time for his city here. And that's part of what's present on the consent calendar here today. Do we want to, maybe this was another member who was going to raise this, and if so, I apologize. But I just see this, I just see his smiling face here. Why don't we turn over Consuela Hernandez for a moment on this one consent item? Which I, what number is it?
Six.
A number six. And why don't, without objection, so just make a brief presentation, and then we're going to turn it over to Assemblymember McCarty, because I know he's busy, and I know he wants to listen to the entire meeting. I know he does. But, you know, he might have a few other things to do as well. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, Consuela Hernandez, Director of Governmental Affairs. Item number six is an item to allow the city to draw down state funds, which were secured for us by our state legislators, especially Assemblymember McCarty. So we're very grateful to them. It's, it's kind of an unusual process for us. We have been granted in SB 176 different pots of money in various sizes for various purposes. One of those items is a $13.5 million fund for community reinvestment, which will be allocated to several organizations. That is, I will keep it brief. I'm happy to have the assembly member join in and maybe speak a little about these funds, his goals for them, and answer any questions.
Very good. Assemblymember McCarty, why don't you add, add on here about what you were able to help deliver for us? And I sent her Pan was involved as well.
Yeah.
You know, the old way. So thank you to him as well. Go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, thank you, city council, for stepping up during this pandemic and doing your work, however you figured it out. So this is my first ever Zoom city council meeting. And so he looks like super efficient. So I know the show goes on. So thank to you, the mayor and council, for, for doing all that. So we just finished the legislative session, as you know, about a month ago. About a month before that, we wrapped up the state budget process, which I will say was a remarkable state budget process, one like we've never seen before. So in the midst of this global pandemic and COVID, which has impacted so many people in a very harsh way, the state economy is booming like we've never seen before. We're talking tens of billions of dollars in unprecedented state revenue, both one-time and ongoing, allowed us to, to make some major reinvestments in, in areas that we all care about. So I know we're going to talk about the one-time stuff in a second, but there, there are tremendous opportunities to implement some of the things that the city is very keen about, some things that I've worked on with, you know, some prior members of the council here as well. After-school programs, expanded childcare, meals programs, college savings accounts, healthcare. So there are plenty of opportunities for the city and our partners to really implement this well and serve our constituents, because, you know, they don't care who's their representative. It's just how these programs impact them. So I think there is going to be ample opportunity to really focus on the priorities that you, that you have. That being said, in addition to, you know, massive money, ongoing monies that we were able to do things like provide universal pre-kindergarten through TK, where we doubled the amount of childcare slots. So we're talking about like 500,000 new publicly funded ECE slots in our communities. Expanded healthcare, a big priority of Dr. Pan. You know, we were also able to do some one-time budget allocations in a, in a variety of ways. And some, you already talked about in the city council, like the monies we got through the, for the rail yards, Mayor, that you worked hard on as well. But this is an area that Dr. Pan and I worked in partnership. And I'm glad you mentioned Dr. Pan, because Dr. Pan and I worked as a team on this together. My allocation in the assembly just at the end was a little bit different. And actually, Assemblymember Jim Cooper did work on a piece, which is part of the allocation today, that we were able to realize that our state budget has some, you know, ongoing things we were able to do in the state budget, because we were booming so much, meant that the super, super wealthy are doing very, very well in Silicon Valley and other areas. But allows us to take a look as far as what we can do to reinvest in our communities or neighborhoods, net programs that have been left behind, communities that have been left behind. So, you know, we were excited to put forward a package of things, which we're going to take the first step today. So working with our, our city manager, with Consuela Hernandez, our government affairs director, and the mayor and the council, we were able to identify, I think, about a half dozen projects out of the get-go, which I believe Howard Chan, the city manager, is somehow going to put up some type of PowerPoint that shows the first round of projects that we are able to allocate. I, I won't go over the entire list, but these touch all areas of Sacramento, all areas of my districts, and all areas of your districts here on the city council. And this is, this adds up to, I think, about $7 million in, or $6.2 million. So we have a childcare center at Sac City. We're looking to expand. We have a CTE and after-school sports program, Hiram Johnson, and after-school program up in District 2 and in the Roblet School District, the Capital Kids Program, city of Sacramento, parks improvements at Granite Regional Park, the softball complex, as well as two Little League facilities at City Parks, at Oak Park and Airport. A few other projects here listed here, which we think are going to, you know, focus on what the council members and the mayor have already been prioritizing in our city and really give a boost to some programs and, and projects we've been trying to get across the finish line or bring closer to reality. So super excited to come back home to my city council, to my city, to, to help present these allocations before us today. And this is round one, I will say. We do have after this about another five and a half million of the 13 and a half that we're going to allocate for round two. In addition, there's the $10 million for the American River Parkway, which we are working with the city and the county and the Sacramento Conservancy over there at Camp Pollock to program that at a later date. So I'm super excited to be here to help make this reality. Thank you, Mayor, for your kind words. And, you know, thank you to all the council members who worked with us and whether you helped recommend some of these projects or ideas or work behind the scenes to make them reality. I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you again, Assemblymember McCarty, and again, the Senator Pan as well. It's all great stuff, all great stuff. Okay, members, are there any members that want to comment on the item? Okay.
Yeah.
I see Councilmember Harris. Sorry, Jeff. Yep, yep. Sorry.
Even after texting you.
I know. Sorry, sorry.
So Assemblymember McCarty, I've got to sing your praises a little bit here. For those of you who don't know, he carried legislation, I believe it was AB 1716, to help create the Lower American River Parkway Conservancy Program, which was an idea that Corey Brown and myself brought forward. He got the first million dollars to seed the conservancy. He's been tirelessly working for the benefit of the Lower American River Parkway and evidenced here by acquiring $10 million to do projects on the lower parkway. So Kevin, I just want people to understand what a champion you are for the parkway and for new amenities to, you know, make, make the parkway more accessible and more enjoyable for all the city constituents. more accessible and more enjoyable for all the city constituents. It was actually the Parkway Conservancy that made it possible for us to buy thirteen acres from Blue Diamond and Smud has contributed another seventeen acres. So Sutter's Landing Park has expanded by thirty acres. And it really couldn't have happened without the Conservancy and Assemblymember uh, McCarty's efforts in that regard. So Kevin, big kudos to you. Really appreciate the collaboration. You've done a great big solid for the city.
That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Vang.
Thank you. Just wanna pile on to the praises for our Assemblymember and Senator team here. I mean, it's such an extraordinary budget opportunity, but I think it's even more extraordinary to have partners at the state level like you two, who are so eager to work with us to make some of these projects a reality. Um, long anticipated plans at Fairy Tale Town, a much long anticipated home for the Latino Center for Arts and Culture. It was really an incredible just gift um, for you to be so willing to work with us and make. I know it was a lot of work for you and your team and for the Senator's team. But I just wanna echo my, my thoughts and appreciation um, for you and your staff and your tireless efforts on behalf of our city. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Yeah, I'll keep my comments short. I just had one question. Um, I too also wanna add to the praises and wanna take this opportunity to thank Assemblymember Kevin McCarty and also Dr. Pan, just for your advocacy to deliver thirty-five million in investment to Sacramento. Incredibly grateful uh, just for your continued advocacy at the state level. Um, I was reading the, the, the report and noticed that um, there is still thirteen point five million that's still to be determined uh, for community investment uh, in Sacramento. And um, Assemblymember McCarty, I wanted to ask you um, if you just had any initial thoughts on the remaining community investment in particular. I know that the city will be, um, once we approve this, the city will either be facilitating some of the allocation or working with nonprofits. But wanted to just, you know, ask you, what were your thoughts for the remaining uh, funds um, for the?
Yeah. Well, I think it's kinda confusing, and that's the problem. We have so much money we're spending here. That's a good problem to have, um, Councilmember Vang. Um, so I think uh, in the answers the question in the sheet that Cons- that Consuela or Howard Chan put up, that little table, maybe if you can go back to it again, um, city staff, it adds up at the bottom there, Councilmember Vang, to, as you can see, six point two million. So six point two million is being programmed already by the city manager's office on projects that we worked with various council offices to program um, of the thirteen and a half. And then the, the other um, roughly seven or so, we're looking at um, projects at, at the uh, the parkway in Sutter's Landing, as well, working with um, UC Davis Health System. I know this is stuff project, this is a project that council members uh, Chenier and Gera are both intrigued and care about, and they're neighbors and frankly, will help everybody throughout Sacramento to work on having a childcare center that are built at the Med Center campus. So we're, we're still trying to figure out the cost of that. So that's the, that's the second part of it. So frankly, I just, you know, I think it's important today to do this, but also uh, we want the public to know that, that these are, are pretty much all programmed. But the good news, I'll tell you, Councilmember Vang and you as well. And frankly, your area may be part of my district in, in three weeks anyway, when they draw the new map. So who knows? And maybe you're, but either way, the economy is booming. Um, still, we have an estimated fifty billion dollars in next year's budget in ongoing, one time again. Um, you know, it, it's, it's a weird thing here. People are hurting with COVID-nineteen, the pandemic, but the super wealthy are doing very well, and they're paying a lot of money in state taxes. And so we'll, we will have another bite the apple. So we'll be able to look at other um, community reinvestment projects in roughly six months when we start working on next year's budget. So if you have projects or ideas, um, start putting them together. Work with the city manager's office like you always have, submit them to us, or you can communicate with, with me and your delegation directly.
I, I, I just wanna add one thing in addition to the congratulations, and that is I am jealous as hell. Um, you know, that uh. I said, kidding, like.
True.
The state is enjoying, and thank God, such tremendous surpluses. I just uh, can't help thinking back to my days where it was very, very different. But I, I, I say that kiddingly, because I, I just couldn't be happier with not only the opportunity, but the fact that we've got strong, you know, representation leadership that's ensuring that it's being directed for things that really matter in our community. So thank you again.
Mayor, one more quick comment. I.
Yes, sir.
I know that, I know full well that Kevin really misses being on council. He's, he's a local politics guy in his core. But you know, from, from the place where he now has power, he's doing great stuff for our city.
Thank you, Councilmember. And look, we'll, we'll be back at it in a few months. So I, I enjoy our partnership, working with all of you. And uh, you know, keep commu- keep communicating with us. Um, Sacramento is a special place, you know. A lot, I will say, it's very lucky than good sometimes. Uh, most of the staff who helped put together this budget, no, they live in our communities. They live in East Sac, in Southland Park, in Natomas, and, and Metavee, in the Pocket, and Curtis Park, Tower Park. So they, they, they live in this community as well. So when we put together good ideas, I think we have a good chance of bringing some of these things to reality. And, and this, I will say too, Mayor, some of the things that you worked on years ago, that never were able to make it to reality, um, universal after-school programs, universal pre-K, um, college savings accounts for, for everybody, that these are now reality. And I say this again, because it's so much money, it's unfathomable to just think about what we did, but we wanna do it right. And we, and we, we need partners like the City of Sacramento and, and the county and our community-based groups to help us implement these. Because we, for example, we need more providers for after-school and youth programs. We need more providers for our childcare efforts. And we need, and so there, there are tremendous opportunities to focus on our mutual interest.
I love it. I, I'm so glad to hear next year's sur- next year's projected surplus. That's, that is hopeful. More than hopeful. Thank you again, Kevin. Thank you, Assemblymember McCarty. Appreciate it. We'll be back in touch. Okay. Members, other items on the consent calendar?
Yep.
A little consent?
Mayor, if I could just bring up one thing really quick, is that okay?
Of course, yeah, yeah.
On the consent calendar, and I'm sorry, I lost track here of what number it is. Whatever, who cares? Uh, it, I wanted to just point out that um, this project is in my district, but probably won't be by the time it's built. But I'm transferring some money from one park to another park that's on the edge of South Natomas and North Natomas. It's called Tanzanite, and we're gonna build two foot-sol courts. And that will be a really nice amenity, and it'll be easily accessible. It's right smack in the middle of Natomas. So for North and South and Garneland, North Gate, uh, it is maybe three blocks from Councilmember Valenzuela's district, and probably about ten steps from Councilmember Harris's district. I would uh, venture to guess that come January, it will not be in my district. It doesn't matter. It's the right spot to put some foot-sol courts, and it'll be in partnership with the uh, Sac Republic. And this will be a really nice spot for all those young people in the north part of the city that play soccer and need a spot to do so that is not on the grass when the weather prevents them from playing out there. So I'm just really grateful, looking forward to it. Councilmember Harris and Valenzuela, you'll have to join me when we get it all opened up. I don't know which one of our districts it'll be in, but one of us, and it will be awesome. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you again. Thank you. Good. Consent, consent calendar?
I have a comment, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Go, go.
So Angelique, I'm a big supporter of foot-sol. It's worked really well in North Gate Park. There's a tremendous demand. Congratulations on programming that. And should it end up in D-three, I'll certainly embrace it.
Jeff, I actually did the foot-sol court in North Gate and then lost that in my district last time to Steve Kohn right afterwards, right after we transferred the money to build that foot-sol court. So it's sort of history repeating itself.
There you go.
Okay, can I get a motion on the consent calendar, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Getta, seconded by Councilmember Vang, I believe. Is that right? Okay, I'm sorry.
It was me, Mayor.
It was, okay, Pro Tim. Okay, do we have public testimony on the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have six hands raised to make public comment. First one is.
Okay, let's hear from, let's hear from the members of the public, please.
Thank you. The first one is Trey Ish.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. Uh, my name is Trey Ish, and uh, I'm one of the owners at a local Sacramento dispensary, South Sacramento Care Center. Um, I'm calling about the moratorium on the ownership change. And I want to uh, advise you to not uh, just to let the moratorium expire. Um, at the law and ledge meeting last week, Councilmember Harris was willing to let the moratorium expire. The other members of the law and ledge committee wanted to finish up the EPS study before making the decision on the ownership moratorium. Um, Councilmember Harris said that he thought that the EPS study had little to do with the transfer of ownership, and I agree, and want the moratorium to expire. The, the rules on the ownership transfer are not only hurting the current dispensary owners and their families, but also some of the core members. On last week's law and ledge committee call, a core member called in and said she was having problems financing her project because of the moratorium. She cannot get a traditional loan because of the business that we're in. And one of the only ways to, to get private money was to give up a portion of her company. Uh, I, I think that this is the wrong move to extend the moratorium when it'll hurt the core applicants, and they're the ones that you, the city council sought to help. It just makes no sense to me. It hurts everybody. Please do not extend the moratorium. Treat cannabis businesses like all other businesses in the City of Sacramento. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kimberly Cargile.
Good day, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kimberly Cargile. I'm the owner of a therapeutic alternative. I'm here to request that you allow the moratorium on ownership transfers to expire and do not extend it. This moratorium has already been in place for two years, allowing staff plenty of time to come up with reasonable regulations on this issue. One year ago, after considerable time and expense to the city, the auditor's findings came back outlining a need for a process of ownership transfer. It is an easy fix to align the city's ownership transfer regulation with the state's Department of Cannabis Controls. The state's regulations have been in place and working well for four years now. All licensees must follow both in-city and state regulations. Thus, conforming the two would streamline the process. The city can use the time and cost that the state has already put in to the city's advantage on this one. This is a topic that deeply affects my life, my family's life, and my future. I have dedicated the last decade of my life to my dispensary. I've been able to provide good-paying jobs for forty employees and ownership opportunities for eighteen of my employees through my ownership incubator program. The pandemic has been hard on all businesses in Sacramento, especially those in downtown, midtown, like my dispensary. For the last six months, we have not been able to pay all of our bills, and we are negative at the end of every month. Our industry cannot get loans, credit cards, government assistance, or grants. The only way that our industry can legally bring in investment in, for help in times like these is to sell shares in our corporation. This will require an ownership transfer. What if I want to retire? What if I want to do something else with my life, such as go back to college? What happens if I die? I cannot transfer to my husband or my children. These circumstances will all require an ownership transfer. I request this item to be removed from the consent calendar and to put on for a discussion agenda today. Item nineteen. Thank you for all that each of me, every one of you does for Sacramento.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kevin Smith Fagan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Kevin Smith Fagan. I serve at Fairy Tale Town as Executive Director. And um, as Councilmember Vang mentioned, Fairy Tale Town is a recipient in this appropriation of state funds for community projects and the consent calendar. And I just thought it was worth noting that this state grant was preceded by the city's own award of six hundred thousand dollars for the initiative. And the city also expanded the park's footprint by half acre to make it all possible. So thank you. Thank you for leading. Thank you for investing in children and families through this Fairy Tale Town expansion. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I know that your letter of support was a boost when the state grant was under consideration. Of course, I echo uh, council's thanks to Assemblymember McCarty and Senator Dr. Pan for their skillful guidance in the budget process. So, construction is imminent at Fairy Tale Town. Families will be benefiting by next summer from a new story center that fosters creative spirit in young children. And there will be an outdoor classroom to host educational sessions for school groups. And when enough funds are raised, we will uh, build a new welcome center too. So thanks to you all for understanding the critical importance of Fairy Tale Town for Sacramento families. Thanks again.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Joe, Joseph Devlin.
Good afternoon, Mayor, uh, members of the city council. Thank you very much for your time today. Joseph Devlin here, representing the Northern California Cannabis Alliance, um, and a number of cannabis businesses, as well as storefront retailers. The current prohibition on ownership change related to council uh, consent item number nineteen um, is currently harming the industry. As some of the speakers have said, it does not account for life-changing events such as illness or death or the desire to retire. The state process does provide for a thoughtful, thorough, and transparent process for changes in ownership. Um, if the council does decide to move forward with extending this moratorium, we would ask that you um, please expedite the completion of the EPS study, specifically uh, this portion and the other portions related to all the policy items, so that uh, these items can move forward um, uh, at an expeditious rate. Um, as, as I said earlier, this prohibition is currently harming the industry at a time where it is being faced with tremendous um, pressures from the illicit market, while costs continue to increase due to regulation and taxation. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Katie Maple.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Katie Maple, and I'm here on behalf of Perfect Union today. Um, we are a cannabis dispensary business. We actually own three businesses, two in District Two and one in District Six. Um, we employ hundreds of people in the city of Sacramento with union jobs that include a living wage, healthcare, and retirement, among other benefits. I'm really proud for the success and the expansion that we've been able to do over the years. We've grown from uh, two, two stores in Sacramento to thirteen statewide in the next, in the last two and a half years, um, and, and wanna continue that growth. But for the last two years, we have been unable to do a lot of the things that normal businesses can do in the city of Sacramento because of the moratorium in place on ownership changes. So that includes some of the things that we would like to do, including selling shares in our own company, um, retirement, and so, in some cases even uh, deaths cannot be accounted for. So uh, we're simply requesting that the city align their process with the state of California. They have very robust process in place at the state level through the Department of Cannabis Control, where they vet new owners and ownership changes. Um, we are required to report all of our owners. We're required to report anyone in our company who owns over a certain percentage. Um, and for those who have over twenty percent, actually have to submit background checks and other information to the state of California. So I hope that you'll consider that and allow us to operate as any other business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Anthony Vasquez.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Vasquez, I am the owner of a cannabis company. We are located at five fifteen Broadway. Uh, we've been operating in the city since two thousand nine, and we've gone through a lot of ups and downs. And uh, I'd like to thank you guys for being a, a, a good partnership in it. But currently, this moratorium is hurting our businesses. I am a core applicant, and I cannot bring on investors, which I desperately need. It's, it's just a bad policy and has impacted the lives of a lot of us. And I wish that you would allow this to expire, because it has imac- impacted us tremendously. Um, I'd like to just thank you and also echo my previous speakers. Uh, please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Next speaker is Mindy Galloway.
Hi, I'm Hello City Council, Mayor, and staff. My name is Mindy Galloway. I am a um, operator in the core program, and I was recently awarded one of the dispensary licenses. And after I heard about the moratorium on ownership transfers, it was something that became a concern to me, as it not only affects me, but it also affects every shareholder that um, is in my business. As a new business, I cannot get loans um, from the bank. As a new business, I cannot get loans from the bank, and there's not very many ways to get funding for a cannabis business, just, except for reaching out to investors. And telling investors that there is no way that they would be able to transfer their shares is very detrimental and, and hurtful for, for their cooperation in investing into a dispensary. I'm also very concerned in similar ways and other, by the other dispensary owners regarding, you know, death or any unknown circumstances that might come up. As I'm entering this process, please don't hinder my growth for being able to open one of the core cannabis dispensaries. And I would very much appreciate if you took the time to add this item to a discussion so that it can be thoroughly discussed and processed before something is solidified. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is a phone call, last four digits, 4366. Caller with the phone number, last four digits, 4366. It's your time to address the council.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis. I, I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Kevin McCarty. He, he is a wonderful human being. Hello?
Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
No, I was just saying that I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Kevin McCarty. He's been a wonderful person regarding what we do, which is a cheesecake business. Him and his wife are on the right side, and I hope that when they do release that second round of funding, they focus in on Dale Passo Heights, Marisville Corridor, and the California Black Chamber of Commerce. But he's a wonderful human being. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
I, I think the mayor stepped out for a second. Mr. Harris, you have a comment?
Yeah, thanks, Vice Mayor. Regarding this issue of changes in ownership in cannabis. Looks like I was muted. Regarding the changes in cannabis dispensary ownership, I'd just like to say that I did have a slightly different opinion than my colleagues in law and legislation, but my pledge to you is as soon as the EPS study comes out, which should be in December sometime, we will crack it open. And if I am correct that the EPS study does not contraindicate that, you know, about changes in ownership, that we can rescind this ordinance and we will work on it as soon as possible. And I know I've talked with Chair Shenier of Law and Ledge, and he concurs. So, it, it won't be long. I'd say be patient just a little bit longer, but we will take it up as soon as possible.
Any other comments by members of the council? Okay, do we have a motion?
We do have a motion by Councilmember Geta and a second by Ashby.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
If you want to hold that open, Mindy, when the mayor comes back, he can certainly vote on that if he chooses. Let's go ahead to item 20. Who's presenting?
Vice Mayor Shenier, I'm sorry. We, I think have requested this item be continued until the 26th.
Okay, great. Do we need a, Adam Clerk, do we need a vote on this to continue it?
Yes, we do need a, we do need a motion to continue it to October 26th at 5:00 PM.
Is Valen's over the motion?
Yes, I'd like to move, we continue this item till October 26th at 5:00 PM.
Okay, I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and second it. Please call the roll.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg is online but muted, and I had no members of the public to make comments on this item.
Okay, let's, let's continue on to item 21, which is historic residence, actually in my district on Montgomery Way. Mr. Decourcy.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Shenier. I am sharing my screen. I hope you can see it. Members of the city council, good afternoon. My name's Sean Decourcy. You're recently appointed Preservation Director for the city of Sacramento, Community Development Department, and I'm pleased to present the landmark nomination for 2681 Montgomery Way. This building, the Chin Havin House, and the neighborhood are associated with the National Better Homes Movement of the 1920s, a campaign of home ownership, modernization, and beautification that grew from a critical shortages of homes in the years following World War I, making it eligible under City Code Criteria 1. The building is also a good example of the Spanish Colonial Revival architectural style. The architectural design is the work of the firm Dean &amp; Dean, whose work is widely represented and acknowledged as significant in the, in Sacramento during this period, justifying its listing in the Sacramento Register under City Code Criteria 3 and 4. This nomination was commissioned by and supported by the property owner and was reviewed by the Preservation Commission, who recommended the city council pass the ordinance attached to your staff report to list the property on the Sacramento Register. Staff has not received any comments opposed to this nomination. This concludes my remarks, and I'm available to answer any questions about the nominations you might have.
Great, thank you, Sean, and, and again, congratulations on your position. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on this?
I have no hands raised to speak on this item.
All right, well, I am going to go ahead and move this. This home joins a number of other homes on Montgomery Way. It is a wonderful street and with residents that care deeply about the future of their block. So, I'm going to move that. Is there a second?
There is a second, Vice Mayor, Rick Jennings.
Okay, Mr. Jennings, seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Shenier, I'm assuming you're opening and closing the public hearing?
That is a correct assumption.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Steinberg, do you want to take the gavel back?
Sure, thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it.
We want, we held open the consent calendar if you'd like to vote on that.
I would. I would like to vote on that. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How do you vote on the consent calendar?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item, item 22, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We're at item 22. This is approval of application for Home Key Funds and Conditional Loan and Grant Commitment. This is part, by the way, of our comprehensive siting plan. Mayor Protem Ashby, thank you for leading the way on this, along with Michelle Dozier of SHRA. Michelle, are you going to begin the presentation?
Yes, this is really a very exciting day for us. It's a long time in the making, and it's the first one out of the chute for our Project Home Key. So, we have Christine Weicker here is going to do the presentation, and we'll go ahead and turn it on.
Thank you, Christine, as well. I was going to say, I know you're the ma, a major driver here, so.
Well, thank you. Well, good afternoon, Christine Weicker, again from SHRA. And last month, the state of California published a notice of funding availability for local entities to apply for the Home Key Program to fund conversions of motels and other non-residential structures into permanent supportive housing for the homeless. SHRA wishes to partner with Jamboree Housing on a motel conversion in North Natomas, submit a Home Key application, and enter into funding agreements for the project. The Staybridge Suites Hotel was constructed in 20, 2007, and after converting to housing, it'll be renamed to Vista Nuueva, and will serve homeless families with at least one child. There are currently 117 studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units with kitchenettes. Ten other units will be for transitional housing, 106 for permanent supportive housing, and one will be a manager's unit. All units are restricted to homeless households earning 30% of area median income or less. In addition, the permanent units will have project-based vouchers attached to them. Minor rehabilitation includes renovation of interior units, offices, common areas, and amenities will include 24-hour desk coverage, security, a pool, picnic area, multipurpose room, playgrounds, and a pet area. Vista Nuueva's proposed property management company is Domus, and Housing with Heart will provide onsite resident services such as after-school programs and four-and-a-half full-time case management staff. Additionally, there'll be 15 units restricted to Mental Health Services Act, or MHSA, funding, and case management and supportive services for those units will be provided directly from the County Department of Human Assistance. In addition to Home Key and MHSA funding, SHRA will provide a $5.8 million loan and a $3.1 million emergency solutions grant for the rehabilitation and operation of the transitional units. If Home Key funds are awarded, occupancy could begin as early as March of next year. We'd very much like to thank Mayor Protem Ashby and the, and Mayor Steinberg for their leadership on this project, and we'd also like to thank Jamboree Housing for their continued partnership. In closing, staff's recommending approval of Vista Nuovo, and we're, Nuueva, and we're available for any questions you may have.
All right. And Jaleek, Mayor Protem, you want to go first on this one?
You want me to go first, or you want to go first, Mayor?
No, I, I don't want to go first or last. Go ahead.
I'll go first. So, first of all, just really, I'm so excited. And as you all already know, this means we'll finally have a family shelter with wraparound services and a relationship with the school district. School district has agreed to support us with a counselor who will come over to the site and work with families with kids in the school district. It is really centrally located, so right in the middle in a Tomas Unified School District. These kiddos are going to get a real opportunity here. We're going to do the best we can to break some cycles of homeless and poverty in families, and I could not be happier. I know that my colleague, Councilmember Valenzuela, and I would imagine my colleague, Councilmember Vang, have probably encountered what I have encountered since they got here, which is, you know, you get a lot of calls. We all get calls about homelessness, but those heartbreaking calls where there is a kiddo involved. And I've gotten so many over the years and really built a lot of relationships as a result with groups, groups like City of Refuge and, and St. John's Women's Shelter, and Chicks in Crisis, and Cash, and Weave, and just anywhere that I can find somebody that will serve a family with a kiddo. But to have our own, to give SHRA the opportunity to have this facility and help run it with Jamboree, to have those 10 units where people with kids can go. This is, this is exactly what I think should be our number one priority as a city, getting kids off. I don't think children should be homeless in the state of California. We have too much money. Just heard Assemblymember McCarty talk about ungodly amounts of money at the state level. You can't have that and still have kiddos sleeping on the streets. Not okay. So, this is a great solution for the city of Sacramento. I'm really proud to host it in my district. I'm so proud of SHRA. I don't want anybody to think that just because this is coming at first that it was easy. It's not easy. Hopefully, it looks easy to you, but it is definitely not. We have fought a lot of battles in the background. One most recently, I had to call in an assist from the mayor. I didn't want to need his help, but I needed his help, and he stepped in and made some calls for me. So, thank you, Mayor, for doing that. I really appreciated it. You and my chief of staff, Karina Telamontes, really did help get this across the finish line and, and really assisted SHRA and Jamboree when they got, got a little stuck in a corner there. And I want to thank Kaiser Permanente because they are a landowner nearby, and they played a critical role in helping get us the sort of zoning changes or approvals that we needed to move the project forward. You know, we're moving this into a hotel that is, doesn't really have residential neighbors, but it has business neighbors. And we all know this, business neighbors have been impacted by homelessness too. And I just want to thank those businesses in advance because for the most part, not uniformly, but for the most part, they've been cautiously optimistic about this partnership. And I know that a year from now, they will be the biggest stakeholders, and they'll be the most invested, and they'll be really in partnership with everybody serving the families at this site. But for now, it's a change. It's a change from a hotel to a shelter, and we, as a city, I think have done a good job of, of dealing with those fears and uncertainties and building the partnerships we need. So, I, I'm thrilled. Can't wait till we're all standing together out there in February or March and talking about letting the first families in. So, Mayor, thanks for your help. Michelle and Christine and your whole team, as always, just, just incredible. I don't know what we would do without you in the city of Sacramento, Michelle. You are a hero. Thank you for your help.
Thank you. This is really exciting. So, you, you partially answered, you did answer, I think, the question I was going to ask. You know my predictable question, in addition to the congratulations and great work, which is when? The families will move in February or March, 110 families, three, you know, average, we're talking about 300 people that are currently, plus people who are currently on our streets because they have to be homeless and unsheltered, correct?
That's right, Mayor. We're all shocked that you're asking about when. It's so unusual for you to push for things to happen faster. Yeah, March is, Mar, they're, they're telling us March, but I think it could be even a little faster. You know what we're waiting here for. We're going to be waiting for the state to allocate funds, but as soon as they do, there are some modifications that need to be done at the site, but they're modest. The facility's in good shape, but they're adding a bit of a playground, adding some shade structures, doing some security things, and just making it safe. So, that may take a couple of months, but we think March, and yes, Mayor, 110. You know, when, when each of us presented our proposal to council, many of us brought a person along with us that was sort of an indication of who we were trying to get to and who we were focused on. You all might remember that I brought a lady named Joanna, who has six children. So, yeah, Mayor, three might be the average, but that depends because had I built this a year ago and I met Joanna, that would have been seven people off the streets and into a, a nice complex that provided the help that she needed. So, instead, lucky for her, she landed with City of Refuge and has done phenomenal, and so have her children. So, we just need more solutions, and this will be a good one for us to add to our repertoire.
A really good one. Thank you again. It's really exciting. Councilmember, do we have public testimony on the, on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I have one hand raised to make comment on this item.
Okay, let's hear from the public first. Thank you.
Sean Wright?
Yes, good afternoon, council and mayor. Councilmember Ashby, once again, you should be congratulated for doing a great job of bringing this project to District One. Hopefully, this is not the last, a project for homeless individuals that you bring to District One. As you all know, this is a citywide problem. We need everyone in the city to participate. If this, other portions of the city do not participate, it ends up, as it has been for many, many years, to concentrate these services in the central city, which basically harms the central city. District Seven, I want to call you out because during the process, you haven't really brought anything to the table. So, hopefully, SHRA and others will bring something to the table for District Seven to participate. As you all know, this is a regional problem, and if you can't get all of the parties in the city to participate, you'll never get the other communities in the county and the other counties in the region to participate. So, once again, Councilmember Ashby, thank you for your leadership on this. Thank you for bringing this to District One, and we look forward to seeing the great success.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for that testimony. I do have members who want to comment. Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to echo Mayor Protem Ashby, my congratulations. This is a really exciting project, and I just want to say that anecdotally, I mean, both when we were staying in the warming center and saw families walk in and were able to get them out into rooms. Similarly, at our safe ground, I've been hearing from City of Refuge that they've been able to make contact with several families who've wandered into that site and been able to get taken out immediately, in large part thanks to the $2 million we allocated for Women and Children Services specifically. So, I just want to echo the fact that this is so timely and so needed. One story, though, that I want to say that I heard, we've been One story, though, that I want to say that I heard, we have a very, very small faith-based service provider that serves maybe twelve families a year. And they told me that last Monday, they walked into their office to forty voicemails, forty voicemails from families who were worried that they were facing eviction and didn't know where they were going to go, and were basically asking, "Where do I go? Where are their services for me?" And so, I just want to reiterate just how critical it is that this is happening at this time because families don't belong on the street, and children don't belong on the street. And the more services we can offer, the more dedicated programming space we can create, the better. So, really excited that this can move forward so quickly because goodness knows it's needed yesterday. And so, the faster whatever we can do to help get it online and make it successful, we stand ready to do that, and congratulations again, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Protem Ashby, you're absolutely right. No child should be raised on the streets of Sacramento. And this is a great opportunity. I really appreciate it. We do have a family shelter in the River District, the VOA Family Shelter. And it is a real heartbreaker to know that children are being raised not in schools but on the streets and seeing the activities that happen on the street. It has repercussions for generations. It's really not a good way to get a start in life. So, congratulations on this PSH Hotel. It's, it's a fabulous addition to our inventory, and I look forward to being there when you open up.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Yeah, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say congratulations to Mayor Protem Ashby just for her years of advocacy for women and children throughout our city. Really great to see this in District One, and we need more of this throughout our city. Again, I just want to take this opportunity to uplift her and just her great work to make this happen and make it reality for, for hundreds of our families and hoping that we could do more of these projects throughout the city. So, great job, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I'm going to speak more to the broader issues during council ideas and comments. And this is an example of what we can do and what we must do more of. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an example of what we can do and what we must do. And Councilwoman Ashby, you are doing a great job of leading us and showing us how we can all do the exact same thing in our districts if we have the opportunity. So, we all applaud you, and I also want to just acknowledge SHRA for the great job that they're doing in making this happen. I look forward to being there at the opening day when we open it up and look forward to seeing all the happy families and children that will be there taking advantage of this place. So, congratulations again.
Thank you, Councilman Jennings. All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, first of all, thank you to all my colleagues for the acknowledgement. That feels great. And of course, it's, it's all LaShelle. So, thank you, LaShelle and SHRA. And Mayor, yes, I'd be more honored to make the motion on this. I think it's, I don't think it's a public hearing, so I don't think I need to close it. Do I, Mindy?
You do not. It's a discussion item.
Okay. All right, I'll move the item.
Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Vang. Let's call the happy role here.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Congratulations again. Really exciting. All right, we now move to the Climate Action Update, item twenty-three. You know, I think, I, I think I will save my comments for after the presentation. I will say to the members, though, that I have asked that any climate action update, never go on the consent calendar. Because I want to make sure that the city council is hearing and discussing the climate crisis and the climate imperative in open session and taking, and discussing it and taking bold action every opportunity that we get. And that's why this is on the agenda today as opposed to, you know, planned status and quarterly update ordinarily. It might be on consent, not for this issue. Jennifer Venema?
Mayor, thank you for that introduction. Good afternoon to you and to our council members. I am Jennifer Venema, our Climate Action Lead. I'm here today with Remy Mendoza, Senior Planner, and I'm just going to pull up my PowerPoint slides here as we provide you with this update. The purpose of the update today is to share where we are at on the climate work that's underway. As the mayor said, this is a quarterly update. We are using this as an opportunity to provide you with a preview of what's coming with the Climate Action Plan. So, today is a discussion item before the cap is released this winter. So, first, quickly, just a reminder that over the last year, councils prioritized a number of urgent items to respond to the climate crisis. And council has backed that up with an allocation of four-point-four million dollars. Our departments are working on a number of items across the categories on the screen. All of these efforts are very collaborative and involve many of our staff across our departments and partners like SAC RT and SMUD. While we've been making significant progress on key public-facing projects, we just want to acknowledge that there is more work to be done and more staff time required for these items from the Climate Work Plan, really extending into next year. While we have had a community climate action plan for a number of years now, recently, we have ramped up these efforts. Recent momentum's led to council's commitment to carbon neutrality by 2045 with declaration of a climate emergency and commitments to accelerate reductions by 2030. For the year 2030, the state's established a goal of a forty percent reduction below nineteen ninety levels with SB thirty-two. As we will touch on shortly, Attachment Two of the staff report provides the draft measures that are identified for the forthcoming Climate Action Plan, the CAP, which shows us on track to greatly exceed the 2030 target. So, here we see the greenhouse gas emissions forecasts and the outcomes of the draft measures in Attachment Two. What this shows, moving from left to right, are emissions levels for our city forecasted from the baseline year 2005 all the way out through 2045 at the right. In orange, we see the contribution of state regulations and programs to get us to our goals. In yellow, you can see the reduction that the draft cap measures will provide, giving us over a million metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent that will be reduced by 2030. Altogether, this will get us to a reduction of just under sixty percent below nineteen ninety emissions levels, exceeding the SB thirty-two goals all by 2030. We show this good progress, but there's still a shortfall to meet the 2045 goal of carbon neutrality. It's important to note, though, that these measures get us very far. They get us over ninety percent by 2045. And just to do this is going to take a lot of work. Looking twenty-five years into the future, we still have some uncertainties, and we know that more state and federal action is needed because we cannot solve the problems alone. Also importantly, we just want to note that the state's revisiting climate targets and looking at its own goals through the 2022 Scoping Plan Update. That plan process is just kicking off. So, we are committed to report on the city's cap progress annually and to update the Climate Action Plan every five years, allowing us to learn and revise rapidly. Importantly, the strategies in Attachment Two reflect the primary recommendations from the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change. Attachment Two does also include a discussion of how the key recommendations from the Mayor's Commission have been integrated into cap strategies. In many cases, we've translated these directly into reduction measures for the cap. Importantly, the cap is also a very data-driven process. So, while we've followed the intent of these strategies, in some instances, we've had to craft measures differently from available data and metrics. So, while not every Mayor's Commission action can be clearly translated into cap strategies, it's getting us to this vision. Importantly, for the cap, we need to provide substantial evidence to demonstrate that the measures can actually get us to our goals. So, just very briefly, here's a highlight of those key actions for the Climate Action Plan. Again, these come from Attachment Two. This is the level of work that's needed to achieve that fifty-nine percent reduction by 2030. Right now, one percent of vehicles in Sacramento are zero emission. In order to achieve the 2030 targets, we need to increase this number so that about one-third of all cars are zero emission. So, we're talking there about the conversion of about two-hundred-thousand vehicles across public and private fleets. In terms of building electrification, while the ordinance for new construction was adopted, we also need to eliminate gas in existing buildings, kicking off that planning process. We need to reduce gas use by about thirty percent in existing buildings. This would mean essentially eliminating gas use in about sixty thousand buildings in the next nine years. Further, we need to shift trips to transit and active modes to get us to a reduction of about thirteen percent in VMT, which is very ambitious. Right now, mode share for public transit is at only three percent today, and we need to get that up to eleven percent or above. Now, the preliminary estimates put the known costs just for the priority city-led actions at over six-hundred-and-sixty million dollars. The full cost to fully implement the plan, including critical infrastructure, could cost well over two-point-five billion dollars. And also note, these are preliminary estimates. They don't capture full costs. In some cases, we still have work to do, like in existing building electrification, to really get our hands around the numbers. And this doesn't include the full cost to our partners. We know that SAC RT alone is going to need upwards of a billion dollars to improve their services and ensure that all of our communities have access to alternatives to single-occupant travel. Now, we know that carbon neutrality is really what everyone's very interested in here. So, looking ahead to what that means, importantly, it requires a broad shift in transformation across all sectors of the community, not just city action, but behaviors by everyone. So, just to be clear in very broad strokes, carbon zero, well, that would mean we don't have gas cars on the road. We're talking again about a fleet of about six-hundred-thousand vehicles. That would mean more incentives, more investment, more standards. That would also mean that all of the approximately two-hundred-thousand existing buildings in the city are retrofit or electrified, and we're looking to get to something like a thirty-three percent reduction of vehicle miles traveled. That would include building out the Bicycle Master Plan, Industry Master Plan, and more. And that would not fully eliminate our emissions. We would still have emissions from waste and landfills. We would still have emissions from wastewater processes. And unless there's state or federal action, the city, to get to carbon neutrality, would need to invest in things like emissions offsets, which could cost millions of dollars on top of sequestering carbon through things like additional tree plantings. And with that, I'm going to transition it over to Remy Mendoza.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Jennifer mentioned, the strategies from the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change have been integrated into our framework. Within our planning framework, there are a number of other significant planning efforts that are underway that will identify the details and, in some cases, refining costs to help implement key goals and policies of the general plan. Three other citywide planning efforts are underway and are being completed in conjunction with the general plan, as shown on this slide here. It's been a strong partnership between departments from the start, and it will take us this strong partnership and a shared vision to implement the general plan and the Climate Action Plan measures and achieve our greenhouse gas reduction goals. Next slide, please. The Climate Action Plan will meet the criteria for SEQA streamlining to facilitate the type of infill development that are necessary to achieve the Climate Action Plan and General Plan goals. Nesting the work under the general plan also gives us some very immense benefits. For example, the Climate Action Plan, as important as it is, it works with the Master Environmental Impact Report and the general plan, and it allows us to streamline the exact type of infill development and smart growth that we need to meet our goals, foregoing tedious project-by-project environmental review. The Climate Action Plan is unique in this way, but it requires a quantitative look at our greenhouse gas emissions. As Jennifer highlighted, it has to meet specific criteria for SEQA with substantial evidence and identified funding sources for each of the greenhouse gas reduction measures, meaning that we can only count greenhouse gas reductions that have a clear pathway for implementation. The Climate Action Plan is therefore not just a vision plan, but it's a tool for infill development. Next slide, please. With that, our team is working to prepare the complete draft of the Climate Action Plan for release very soon, along with the general plan. The goal is for public release in late 2021 with hearings for both plans starting early next year. This concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer your questions. We're accompanied tonight by city staff, our consultant, and along with representatives from SMUD and Sacramento RT to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. A good presentation, excellent presentation. I want to hear from the members of the public here first, and we'll turn it over to councilmembers. And I know I do have some comments. So, Madam Clerk, how many callers do we have on the line?
I have seven callers on this item. The first is Kate Wilkins.
Hello, council. My name is Kate Wilkins. I'm a resident in District Five. I'm a state worker and a volunteer with 350 Sacramento. The city council acknowledged the climate crisis in December 2019 and gave staff direction to develop a plan to achieve carbon neutrality by 2045 and emergency action towards eliminating emissions by 2030. As presented in the staff's report that was attached to this agenda item, it's disappointing that this proposal would still not even fully meet the city's 2045 target. Staff's presentation today also failed to talk about the cost to the city if we did not implement these measures fully and getting to net zero by 2045, or the increase in cost by focusing on 2045 instead of accelerating actions towards 2030. I ask the council to please schedule a council-level workshop that includes external presenters and public input within thirty days of the release of the draft cap and general plan that focuses on transportation and how it is integrated with land use, which is where the bulk of the greenhouse gas emissions need to be made and is the most challenging aspect. I also urge you to direct staff to provide at least one alternative scenario for achieving carbon neutrality that is, that is bolder and more ambitious than what has been presented today and uses 2030 as a target, which is consistent with the council's own emergency declaration. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Alex.
Yes, this is Alex Belsner, member of Sunrise Movement Sacramento. Do you think climate change is an emergency? Your staff says in 2045, the city can reach ninety-two percent of its goal. Where are you going to be in 2045? Who's going to be in these council seats? What will our environment look like in twenty-four years? That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four years. Like from nineteen seventy-six, the disco era, to 2000, Y2K, that's how long? What are you doing to lead on this emergency and show the public that it is an emergency? You know with COVID how quickly our lives can change, big time. We're here on Zoom. We have the adjoining county where one priority is a southeast freeway a spending on putting more traffic into our area. In our Sunrise group, we have several high school students who are bright and eager. They're very worried about the future. What is the environment going to look like for them? Just this year, we've seen the wildfires wiping out Greenville and Grizzly Flats, and South Lake Tahoe was evacuated. Unfortunately, climate change is not fairy tale town. It's real. Why not be able to set the standard, issue some findings on what it would take to do this by 2030? If you don't shoot for something more ambitious, you're not going to reach the actual goal in time. Give us another reason to do this by 2030. We have eight more years in this decade. What are we going to do then? What are we doing within your time in office? Get your new black folders out, and let's not just change the folders, change the assumptions you're making in this report that we have lots of time until 2045.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Anne Strauss-Ball.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is Anne Strauss-Ball, former chair of the Mayor's Climate Commission, and today also repre- and today also representing the SAC Moves Coalition. We do appreciate the staff efforts in putting this material together and especially want to acknowledge Jennifer Venema for all her efforts to keep us informed along the way. Almost two years ago, in December 2019, this council had the wisdom to declare a climate emergency. And you asked your staff to give you a plan to achieve carbon neutrality by 2045 and emergency actions towards eliminating emissions by 2030. Since then, the climate crisis has only worsened, yet the outline of the plan before you wouldn't achieve carbon neutrality by 2045, let alone 2030. So today, we ask for two actions. First, that you ask your staff to provide you with more ambitious alternatives that match the scale of the crisis, including at least one scenario using 2030 as the target. We need to understand what we can do by 2030 if we have the courage and the vision to do so. Second, focus your attention on transportation. That's where the bulk of emission reductions need to occur. Council should lead a public workshop to develop a bold vision on how we shift from our current car-centric policy to one that's multimodal and integrated with land use. We recognize the enormous complexity and cost associated with all of this, but the less we do in the near term, the more severe the consequences. Mayor and Council, we're counting on you to make sure that our precious city remains livable, and we're eager to participate with you in that effort. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jonathan Ellison.
Yes, thank you. I'm John Ellison, co-chair of the Ecos Environmental Council in Sacramento Land Use Committee. And I appreciate, we appreciate the efforts and the initial comment that Mayor Steinberg made about, you know, the city taking the lead. We think Sacramento has the opportunity to act as a climate leader for the region. And same as the prior speakers, we think we need to accelerate this. We have to be reasonable, but we do accelerate. In the words of global climate teen activist Greta Thunberg, "We need to act like our house is on fire." We'd also like to see the city hold a series of public workshops on transportation and land use components of the plan. But I do, I did like, we did like the transparency. We're doing advocacy around the County Climate Action Plan. The cities is, the staff, Jennifer and everyone, you guys get it. It's just a matter of what we can do quickly enough. The summary document is impressive because it's clearly written with an obvious intention to be transparent, but the same clarity of approach is carried into the plan itself. It will not help if we just talk about it. We really need implementation and action. The most difficult sector is transportation, as mentioned earlier. Some 55, 60% of the greenhouse gas emissions. So the city's prioritization of infill development, active transportation, and transit is critically important. Ecos will support such strategies and their funding and their implementation. Again, we urge the city to assume the climate leadership role for the region and wherever possible, accelerate the climate actions, like someone just said. You know, we need to plan aggressively, whether we meet those plans or not. We can't say, oh, someone else, someone might not like this. This is, you guys know, this is a tipping point, and you have the opportunity to...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, you electors have the ability to leave your legacy, the beginning of our attempt to combat the climate change.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Sue Terranici. Sue Terranici, will you unmute? Next speaker is Lori Littman.
Hi, my name is Lori Littman. I'm the co-founder and president emerita of 350 Sacramento, and I also served on the Mayor's Climate Commission. I want to preface these comments by saying I'm speaking for myself, not on behalf of any organization. The polite thing to do is to thank you all for your climate efforts, but I'm not feeling very polite or thankful. I'm distressed, frustrated, and outraged that we're in a situation where the climate crisis is so dire that whole towns have burned up, a drought is disappearing our water, and the IPCC, which is very conservative, says we have less than a decade to cut emissions drastically. And you, our leaders, still don't seem to get it. You continue to treat this as business as usual. Climate scientists agree that climate change is an existential threat. That means we're talking about whether humans and other species will continue to exist. The changes are happening faster than anyone expected, and we may soon, in the next few years, reach a point where climate chaos spirals out of control. You're the leaders, the decision-makers. As far as I see, the city's actions have been largely performative. A climate commission, an emergency resolution, a climate action plan, all very nice, but so far, they've just been another means of delay. And I also want to quote Greta Thunberg. She said, blah, blah, blah. The reality of what we're facing requires strong, aggressive, drastic action on a scale, time scale, that you don't seem to grasp. Delay is killing us and the planet. There are no excuses, just do it. We should shut down. We should have no more fossil fuel at all. And you're not doing enough. You're not doing it fast enough.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. You're not doing enough. You're not doing it fast enough. You're the leaders, act like it.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Catherine Bradshaw.
Sorry, actually, my name is Rosie Yakub. I forgot to change a setting on Zoom. I'm calling from District Four. And I want to say staff has done a good job here, but I am likewise concerned that the amount of GHGs addressed by 2030 is outlined and in the plan here is not enough to meet our climate emergency. For example, where they say that natural gas usage in existing buildings will be reduced by 28%, that just doesn't seem like enough and not what's possible, especially if we're getting to 25% of existing building stock fully electrified. We need to be more aggressive. We need to work more quickly. Like, for example, we have to get as many buildings as possible electric-ready in the next five years so that we can make the changes further on. And we need to start addressing those short-term needs now. So, you know, we are making a plan rather than planning to fail. Yes, we need to work more on transportation because that's where most of the greenhouse gases are. Getting more aggressive plans on the books puts the city in a more shovel-ready place to get funding from state and federal levels so we can attract more of the millions of dollars that Jennifer mentioned. So please, direct staff to prepare at least one more ambitious scenario for the draft cap, carbon zero by 2030, and facilitate an informed discussion, a council-level workshop that has external presenters and public input within 30 days of the release of the draft cap. And finally, I'd like to mention the second A, adaptation, could be better addressed by including more about drought-proofing our city, like having gray water and rain capture requirements. Thank you very much for your time and all of your efforts. Let's please do this thing.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Sue Terranici. It appears Sue's having technical difficulties. Next speaker is Moiz, M-O-I-Z.
My name is Moiz. Is there a timer? Hello?
Moiz, it's your turn to address the council. You have two minutes.
Okay, thanks. Hi, my name is Moiz. I am an organizer with 350 Sacramento, as well as Sunrise Movement Sacramento. Just want to echo the comments of all my colleagues and friends calling in. I served on the Mayor's Commission Climate Changes Equity Technical Advisory Committee, volunteered with the Mayor's Office at the time that the emergency declaration was being drafted. And thank you for passing it. But again, echoes that, that demand of the SAC Moves Coalition and that it isn't reflected in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. And so echo those demands of having that extra scenario that is more ambitious. That concludes my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Message heard loud and clear. I'll save my comments for after my colleagues. Let's start with Councilmember Gueda, then Councilmember Valenzuela, then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep them brief here, but I do acknowledge, I think, what one of the last commenter said, that we, in order to meet any of our goals, we have to have a clear and thoughtful detailed plan moving forward. And I do think that a council-led work, what do you call it, workshop, would be beneficial, particularly with focusing on transportation and land use. So I would like to request that we do that. And I, and, you know, the staff laid out really what the true cost is right now, which is a significant number. You know, there are members of the public who brought up that, you know, the need to do the 2030 plan. And I think it's prudent to ask that question, to say, what will that cost be? But, you know, the, if we don't set a plan forward, I mean, we just set these goals, and we don't have, we don't dive into, you know, really setting a strategic plan forward and working at it, then, you know, I don't, I don't think we'll ever achieve those goals. The other piece that I want to, want to acknowledge the staff were Item Seven, Section Seven of the work plan, which talks about workforce and transitioning to the workforce. I'd like to make sure that we put a higher level of priority in making sure that we're meeting that aspect first. I always feel that we set these goals without thinking about what does it mean to transition our own residents into the opportunities, into the solutions to address our, whatever challenge it is, and then we import solutions. So I'd like to express that we elevate the workforce and transition is a priority. Lastly, the only aspect I saw in the work plan on economic development strategies was, I think it was in Section Five of the work plan, but I'll bring this up at the California Mobility Center. We should be more aggressive about our own fleet planning and working with the county on our fleets. I know we're purchasing some electric garbage trucks and refuse trucks. I've brought this issue up before when we purchased, you know, large dump trucks, and they've been from states like Texas that probably aren't meeting any environmental or air quality management regulations at the level that we do. We should be supporting the economic development of those technology solutions here in Sacramento and using our own manufacturers to find the solution. So I feel that if we're going to meet these, the goals that we're trying to achieve, we also have to do it in a way where we're leading the market on the solutions for these areas. And we have the partners. We have, you know, environmental companies that are doing that work here. Right now, that we were fortunate to bring in Lyons, that's doing the electrification, and we've electrified Twin Rivers School Bus System, Elk Row. Now we're starting with the Thomas and Sacramento Unified. That's just an example, but we can lead that way in actually doing something that's productive also by getting our own residents in that. I do want to thank the folks at SMUD working with us to also do that, that we start looking at equity and recruiting from our disadvantaged communities and these new jobs in the pipeline, but we need our focus on that. So, Mr. Mayor, I think that's the, my advice here is that we do this council-led workshop on transportation and land use, look at that 2030 alternative, but really hone in also, I think, on the issue of workforce and the economic strategies that would be beneficial to the, to our city, in our region frame.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Gueda, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff. I just want to echo the kudos in terms of process. Like, I appreciate that you're bringing this to us now, that it's in such a public forum, that you've been so transparent about what you're looking at and why you're looking at it, because I really think it informs really specific ideas and feedback, which is a lot of what we heard tonight. And I want to echo my colleague, Councilmember Gueda's request. I do think a council-level workshop on transportation makes a lot of sense. I'd really like to hear from the community and from my colleagues more about what's feasible, what's not feasible, what they're looking for, what does zero emission look like? And it's going to be very different in every part of the city. I was able to go car-free in Midtown for three years, but that was such a privilege because I lived in Midtown, where we had get cars and walkability and bikeability. And we really want to think and plan, and I think a council workshop would be a great idea. But I also want to echo the caller's call for an alternative scenario. I've been really deeply engaged in the state scoping plan process and an oversight of those goals for many, for a while now. I won't name years. But I think that what I really appreciate about that process is it forces the legislature and the California Air Resources Board to make choices. Do we think we can raise more money? Do we think we can improve the technology? Do we think we can do this faster? And what I think would be helpful for the community to see in a 2030 scenario, what zero would look like, would really be those questions. You know, you all have looked at this and said, gosh, we just don't think we can get there. We don't think we can afford it. Well, what would that look like if we were to make that choice as a council to say, you know what? We can't afford it right now, but if we ran a climate bond, maybe we could. You know, we couldn't afford this right now. Maybe it's going to be 25% for existing buildings right now. But, you know, we do want to talk about job transitions, and maybe we can do that a little bit faster. So I think seeing that and your expertise and analysis on that would really help us give you that feedback and really make those choices. Because I don't want this to just be a plan of what we think we can do now based on what we currently have. I really would like this to be an opportunity for the council and the community to decide what additional things we want to commit to beyond what we think we can do now. And that may mean lobbying the legislature. That may mean lobbying the federal government. But I think that's really what the moment calls for, as a lot of callers said. And I know that you all have the information and expertise to really give us those scenarios and show us what it would take if we were going to try to get to zero by 2030. And maybe we fall short, but I'd love to aim for it, right, as best we can. And I know we've talked about this because I think aiming for it is really important, and the effort we put into that would get us closest better than not trying. And I'd really like to see what that would look like for us as a city. So thank you, Jennifer, and Remy, for all the work you and your teams have put into this.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that our staff has given us a dose of reality here. Look, if anybody has read the IPCC report, then you understand that sea level rise could affect the Sacramento region within 15 years. If you know about it, the AMOC, the Atlantic Meridional overturning Current, is probably the most existential threat to the planet that there is. It's slowing down. Greenland is melting. Huge glaciers are caving off of Antarctica. It is true, the urgency that the callers brought forth is very real. So how do we address that? What the callers are asking us to do with great urgency is change the behaviors of most of our constituents. And I put the challenge back on them. Look, if we're going to make real change and get to carbon neutrality in Sacramento by 2045, everybody has to participate. Ask yourself right now, do I ride RT? Do I, have I bought an EV? Can I afford it? What can the city do to actually make real changes to people's ability to change their mobility choices? These are tough issues. The plan that our staff has laid out is realistic. It shows where we are. But, you know, that sense of urgency really has to affect every one of our constituents for us to make real change in greenhouse gas reductions. I agree with Lori Littman about her sense of urgency, but not that what we're doing is performative. You know, the city cannot legislate people to change their behaviors. What we can do is enable them to change their behaviors through incentives, through, you know, actually helping them afford changes in their lifestyle. If we're going to get to 33% ridership on RT, we have to look at things in real time, like building a bridge across the American so that one-fifth of our population can be served by RT. You know, these are the things that the city can affect. But to do that, we have to do things like pass Measure A. we have to do things like pass measure A, so that we have enough money to be able to affect these kinds of changes. I, you know, I really laud staff's achievement with this climate action and adaptation plan. I'm fine with doing a workshop to talk about what it would take to, to move our goal forward, move our goalposts to 2030. What it really means is people fundamentally have to change their behaviors. And the best the city can do is incentivize and subsidize to enable those changes. Do we have the money to do it? Not really. We have to be realistic about that, too. You know, these really are existential issues. The city of Sacramento, of course, is not going to change the climate crisis, but we have to do our part locally and we can be a leader. And the mayor has taken a step to make us leader, which I definitely appreciate by bringing this conversation to the fore. You know, people may look at Sacramento and say, man, that municipality really got in front of this issue. I would like to be there, but you know, frankly, once again, we really have to enable people to make different choices about how they live, how they move. And, and we are doing that with electrification. You know, we're fighting the battle about people changing from gas to electricity. People love using gas for cooking. Right now, it's cheaper than electricity. So, you know, the market factors affect that also. It won't be long until gas is very expensive and electricity looks like a great choice. We can't affect as a city those market pressures, but we can lead the way by working with SMUD to incentivize service panel changeouts so that people will have the capacity to make changes in their own homes. We are taking these steps. I think that as a municipality, we are doing well. I understand people's desire to force us or encourage us highly to make it happen quicker. And, and I laud all those efforts and I certainly am eager to participate in them. But let's share the responsibility. The city's not going to change climate. The people in the city will change climate by the choices they make in their lifestyles. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Let me weigh in here a little bit. Obviously, the people are ultimately in charge and their behaviors matter, but I think it's also true. And I think when I still the comments from some of the frustrated advocates, they're saying that leadership matters, and I agree with them. You know, we have a very talented team on the staff side. I mean, Jennifer Venema, come on, and Jennifer Donald Wyatt and all, all the team. You're talented people. I think what's really at issue here is that that team is looking for clear, it may be clearer direction, frankly, from the policy makers. And some of this, not want to, don't want to blame the process, but some of it is a little, think about this, for example, as I said earlier, this would be on consent ordinarily. So what happens? The court, you know, they, the staff works really hard to put together a quarterly action plan that comes before the council. We'll devote, you know, 45 minutes to it today. And that's good, but it's not nearly enough. What the public is really saying to their elected leaders, including me, is we want you to engage more a- as leaders, we want you to engage more individually, and we want you to engage as a body to push the limits here. And yes, assess the choices, because there, there are choices. And no, we can't do it all. This conversation is sort of similar to another major social issue that we talk about all the time here at, at the council. But they expect us to lead more forcefully. We took good, and I would say aggressive steps together in establishing the Climate Commission and passing the electrification ordinance, but that's not nearly enough. And so I think that the SAC Moves Coalition and the speakers today actually make some very constructive suggestions. And it's on us, and I will take the responsibility with my staff, working with you, colleagues and your staffs and the community to organize an early 2022 workshop that focuses on transportation and that also lays out for the community and each other of the scenarios that, that, that show us real options, including how we might get to carbon neutrality by 2030. The world's changing awful fast. Technologies change in awful fast. There may be new opportunities presented to us statewide and nationally that will enable us to move faster. So I take the criticism here and the frustration to heart and say that what we need to do, and what I pledge to do, is to lead even harder. And the way I think we do that, at least in the near-term context, is to organize a substantive council workshop that, one, gives us more time than this 45 minutes, and two, an agenda that we help write with Jennifer Venema and her staff that allows us to go deeper and to do that scenario analysis that is understandable to the public and that shows what it would take in terms of changed behavior, in terms of public investments, for us to beat the 2045 timeline. You know, let's not underestimate our power either. It's true, we're just one city, but we also are the capital city, and what we do here matters. And what we do here could lead to other cities doing the same. It could lead to state legislation. It could lead to national legislation. So I pledge, and I suppose this is direction to the staff, because I think you're looking for it. I want to not, I don't want to put it all on you, Jennifer, to go do these workshops and we'll show up. We are going to work with you as partners to do the kind of workshop that is called for in the SAC Moves letter and then what we heard today, and let's get deeper into this and lead more proactively as opposed to receiving your very fine report on, on a quarterly basis and, and, and letting that be the end of the story. I, I'm, I'll be in touch with both the community and with, and with our team. Fair enough.
Mayor, can I chime in one second?
Yeah.
I just, I just want to say a thank you to you, because I've been on this council long enough to know that, you know, you've done a lot of work with the Mayor's Commission, and you started things with West SAC, and you turned it into a regional approach. And I know you've worked with SECOG and others, and I know Councilmember Chenier, Vice Mayor Chenier, also tried to lead some conversations there, which is a hard thing to do. It's hard to get the regions to shift their attention to one thing. And so I also want to thank all the advocates who are calling in, you calling, nudging us, pushing, pushing everyone in the region. That's how we get there faster. It really is. And we can do better, but we also should take some time to acknowledge that we're doing better than we were and that you have really strong leadership in place and people fighting hard to make a difference. So I'm grateful to be a part of that movement moving forward, and I'm proud of the members of this council who have taken up the battle in various committees, commissions, creating areas, creating a voice. And you're right, just the idea that this is an item on the agenda for discussion rather than something just being handed to us is already a lot of progress. So I know we can do more, Mayor, but I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, it's not, I, I think trying to be, you know, I want to be, I, I want to be constructive here. You know, I take, as we all do, we take the constructive criticism to heart. Sometimes the meaner criticism is tougher to take. This was the former, not the latter. And I take it to heart. The other comment, I just, something I forgot that's really important to me and all of you, was the first caller, I forget her name. But she said, you know, when we do this climate analysis around cost and what it costs to get to 2030, we have got to also factor in the cost of not acting more aggressively. What is the public safety cost with dealing with the consequence of sea level rise and, and the, the impact on our city? What is the drought cost? What is the natural disaster cost? What's the fire cost? What is, what is the cost as these man-made events continue to affect the country, our state and our city? Because that's on the bottom line, too. And if that is not factored into the choice whether to take more aggressive action, then we're dooming ourselves to less action, because of course, anything, any change, any change costs a real amount of money in the short term, but it's not a static view of the cost. It, it's got to be a dynamic one, and it's costing us financially, as well as in, in every other way to not use every tool at our disposal. More to come. Thank you. Jennifer, you want to, before we, you, you want to, maybe you can summarize or Remy Mendoza, what, what it is you heard here? Maybe you want to take some time and reflect on it a little bit. You guys are really important and your, your heart is really into this, and we see it. And like I say, I don't think it's you. I think it's us. I really do. It, it's, it's us. We're trying to provide you, I'm trying to provide you, I think we're all trying to provide you clear directions so that we can be even more aggressive. Go ahead.
Thank you for the feedback. Very helpful and I think clear for us on the project side direction to have a workshop when the cap and the documents are released. That will be when we have the full draft general plan available as well and to figure out an approach to look at these other scenarios of getting to zero by 2030. So we'll take that back as a team and look forward to working with everyone to figure out how we get there.
Okay. But again, we're not going to wait your next report. We're going to plan a workshop here together. All right?
Correct.
Okay. Super. Thank you very much, everybody. Do we need a motion on this, or are we, this is just an update?
This was a review and comment.
Review and comment. I think we accomplished that. Okay. We've got one more item here, and that is item 24, which is a verbal report on ensuring indigenous youth are included in youth development and violence prevention programs. Who is the presenter on this? Dr. Clavo?
Yes, Mayor, and, and Councilwoman Valenzuela.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to start, Nicole? Or would you like me to?
You can start, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. Well, thank you all for indulging us today. I was really excited we were able to bring this item forward just for discussion and feedback on the same day that we recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. You may remember that on September 15th, we held a webinar on missing and murdered indigenous relatives in Sacramento. Sacramento has the second highest number in California, and in part due to our large population, but also in part due to a real lack of resources and investment in programming to really help the native community stay safe and take care of themselves. And we did this workshop in partnership with the Wilton Rancheria, Restoring Justice for Indigenous Peoples, and Native Sisters Circle. And I hope we can share the video with you soon. The Native Sisters Circle actually brought some youth from our community so that we could hear directly from them. And it was incredibly powerful to talk about the root cause and to hear from family members of women and girls who are missing, who have been murdered, about what led to that situation and what they'd like from the city in order to move forward and protect the women and girls and communities and relatives among us. So we had three next steps that came out of that, which is why we're bringing this item for discussion to you all today. The first next step was the resolution that we recognized the Wilton Tribe with and other partners with this morning or this afternoon. Sorry, I forget what time it is. The second is a cultural training for city staff, which is something that I've already brought to our city manager, Howard Chan, for discussion. I'd really like to pay someone to come in to train our city leaders on cultural competency for native people so that we can really work in better partnership on an ongoing basis with the tribal community. But the third and most important thing was funding for youth programs. We, as a city, have said that part of preventing violence is investment in youth, and there is a real lack of thoughtful investment specifically in programs that target native youth in our communities. And so part of the next step that Dr. Clavo will talk about in discussions with groups like Restoring Justice for Indigenous Peoples was how we could try to correct that moving forward, thanks to the investment that in large part is due to the advocacy of Vice Commissioner and others on this call. We have this unprecedented opportunity to really invest in youth programs and to really address some of the root causes of some of the violence we're seeing in our communities, and nowhere is that more needed, I think, than in the indigenous community here in Sacramento. So, Dr. Clavo, I'll, I'll pass it over to you to talk about the work and conversations that are going on.
Thank you. So I had the pleasure in sitting in some of these meetings that Councilwoman Valenzuela is speaking of. And, and it was a lot that I was not aware of, so it was quite a privilege because I was able to learn a lot in these conversations as it relates to our indigenous population, our youth and, and our women that are being overlooked and overseen. And with that, so initially, one of the meetings that we were with was the WW, the MMIW with Morningstar. And so what we were able to do with Morningstar, and we're still waiting on some feedback from her, but we did try to connect her with some of our local CBOs in organizations within the city of Sacramento that are working with women. And then we had an extensive meeting, Lindy and I had a pretty extensive meeting with SNAP. We met with their team, with their complete team, and was able to discuss with them the work that we do in our perspective, in our respective departments, as well as understand and learn what they're doing. And so we're really looking forward to learning more about their youth family center that they're opening up in South Sacramento. And we are also able to provide them, many of the organizations that the city is already working with, provide them emails, provide them phone numbers, contact people and things of that nature to try to move forward. So we look forward to continue to have those meetings with them, to add resources to them and answer any questions that they may have going forward. And so it was a, a pretty informative meeting, and we did learn a lot and get to understand what they're doing. They are having issues. They do have issues with some of their youth and gangs, but it's not a gang. Just, I would say it's not gangs, that's just relative to the indigenous population. They're, they're already joining the gangs that are already exist. And so that's something that we need to look into and, and dig a little further into and do more research, because I wasn't aware of that. And so there's things that, you know, I'm, I'm so excited about because I'm learning, I'm, you know, growing and being able to connect them to the right resources that are available for them.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Clavo. So I think our goal today was to update you on those conversations and to really hear from the council, if there's groups maybe in your districts or groups that you're aware of that we should be working with or bringing in, or just ideas or thoughts you had. And, and again, I hope we can share the, the webinar recording with you soon. It was incredibly powerful to hear about, you know, why they thought that their sister had been trafficked and eventually killed on a trip to Vegas. You know, why the families need more support, why is it that youth are turning to some of these organizations and these groups when they need shoes, when they need clothes, when they need support in the community. It was, it was really powerful and I think really made a compelling case for, for the types of investments and programming that Dr. Clavo and the great team in the YPC department are, are looking at today. So I'm happy to hear, take any comments or feedback, and thank you, Mayor and council for this time.
Great. Thank you for, again, bringing another equity issue to the attention of the full council, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Chenier.
So, thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. Appreciate you bringing this. I think there's kind of a, a short term and a, and a longer term question here. The longer term is certainly some of the things that you've laid out, and how do we, how do we work together collaboratively over a period of time to make sure that resources and the efforts of, of what we're doing are spread to, to these folks and to these young people who are probably not getting the support that they need to be as successful as we want them to be. In the short term, I think it'd be important also to make sure that, that the leaders know about a lot of the programming that we have. So I know, I'm assuming that Lindy is doing that, but whether it's Summer at City Hall, whether it's the Youth Leadership Academy at SECOG, but really trying to get these young people involved at, at a broader level as well so that we can be working with them, because they're, they're our leaders as we look at them today and hopefully as we look at them in the future. So I think those are things that we, some things that we can be doing now, and I would look forward to further discussion on it.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Mayor. Anybody else? Is there public testimony, Madam Clerk?
I have no hands raised to make comment on this item.
Okay, Councilmember Valenzuela, any final comments?
No, no, thank you for the time, and I look forward to building on the great work again, like Vice Commissioner has felt so much great energy. And I know Councilmember Jennings around youth programming, around violence prevention programming, and I think this will just bring an additional layer. And I think this will just bring an additional layer that will make all of that even more effective. So thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Very good. Terrific. Okay, that concludes, uh, the formal part of our agenda. Are, is there public testimony on items not on the agenda?
Yes, I have two hands raised to make comment for matters not on the agenda. First is Daniel, Daniel Savala. Daniel Savala.
Yeah, I apologize. I hit the wrong button. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you, uh, for a great meeting today. Lots of important work being done. I'm calling in tonight, you know, on behalf of the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership to ask for some help. You know, council members, you know, long, for far too long, buildings on Del Paso Boulevard had allowed to just stay vacant. Storefronts with broken windows, graffiti we have to constantly go after. We've got a building that's been vacant for more than ten years that the owner stores personal, his piano's in. We have a restaurant that's on the market, off the market. And, and it just continues to compound some of the other challenges that we have here on Del Paso Boulevard. Mayor, Council, I'm really asking and hoping that the city will work with the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership and the Office of Councilmember Luloi here in District Two to put together a tougher ordinance against blighted and vacant buildings, whether it be a, a, a fee for, for ba- buildings that are vacated. Uh, and this goes well beyond the COVID pandemic and, and, and trouble that small business owners are having. This is a longstanding issue here along Del Paso Boulevard and other parts of our city. Uh, and I'd really love to engage the council, uh, on a very important ordinance or a change to any existing rules that say you can't just maintain an empty boarded up building, uh, to the detriment of the business community and neighbors who call Del Paso Boulevard a North Sacramento home. So consider the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership and our Board of Directors as your partners moving forward. And with that, I thank you all and wish you all a great rest of your week.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lambert Davis. Mr. Davis, it's your turn to present to the council.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis of To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes. And I wanna make a couple of announcements. First of all, I would like to thank city councilwoman Katie Valenzuela for recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. That's a wonderful gesture on your part. It's sta- it's actually consistent with your views on equity and race. I wanna thank you for that. I also wanna thank, uh, I wanted the mayor and the city council, the city manager and, and the staff to know that last weekend, we released a pumpkin swirl cheesecake and during a pumpkin festival and also the way off in Half Moon Bay. And this shows that people like cheesecake, no matter what race and no matter what culture and both sexes. We went viral and during that time, we were actually called and patronized by city councilwoman Mai Vang. I wanna thank her and her staff for patronizing us and I really appreciate that. And last but not least, Mr. Luloi, we're ready to meet with you. We are a small business. That's what you say you endorse. And we also have the numbers, since you're a numbers guy. So anyone knows that pumpkin season is here. And for us to go viral and at the same time, our DGS certification was renewed, Mayor. That's not easy to do because of IRS requirements. So, and also I wanted to say hello to the chairman of the tribe, uh, Mr. Torongo. I hope I can reach out to him and get his number because he's a wonderful human being. And my number is nine one six three seven zero nine two one one. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Right, thank you. Uh, I know I have a comment which may take a few minutes, but, uh, so I'm gonna turn it first over to Councilmember Valenzuela and Vice Mayor Shenier.
And Mayor, I have a adjourned memory, so I'd like to go last if I can.
Okay, is that, eh, do you have another comment in addition to the adjourned?
I'll, I'll do it at the same time. It's very short.
Okay, that's fine. Why don't, then Councilmember Valenzuela?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just really briefly, I wanted to ask the city manager, I've got some data requests from SACPD, um, from my police commissioner that I'm gonna forward to you, um, around nine one one call data, budget spending and FTE. So I'll forward you the detailed breakdown of, of what they're looking for, but, um, wanted to just put that on your radar tonight during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll call on Vice Mayor, uh, last year for an adjourned memory. But I wanted to, I know this item is not on the agenda today. A- and so it can't, could be debated, but I do have the opportunity and the obligation as the mayor to use uh, my ideas and questions, um, to speak my mind about something that is roiling our community. I think it's fair to say it's roiling our community. And that is the social condition. Some refer to it as unsheltered homelessness, some refer to it as uh, behavior, uh, drug substance abuse, um, and and certainly significant impacts on the health, safety, uh, and cleanliness of our entire community. As we continue working hard to implement the comprehensive siting plan and define more respite as the winter months are approaching. Today is a pretty good example, the last two days, uh, the cold and windy weather. I wanted to take a few minutes to comment on two items that are relevant and important to our opportunity and our challenges. First, I wanna give a report from my perspective um, on the implementation of our siting plan. And secondly, I want to express my views on the issue of enforcement. First on implementation. I wanna thank the city staff and the city team and the council members and the community leadership for working really, really hard to, uh, break through. That's what I call it, to break through. And I wanna report to you that, um, we are close to the community, that we are close to a number of breakthroughs. And I wanna just go through them very quickly, but I think it's important that the public know that real work is going on here and that we are close. Today, of course, we approved the State Bridge, uh, motel project, a hundred and ten families. Thank you again. Your pro temp and, and a tentative timeline to bring in a hundred and ten families and between three and four hundred people. We are working, and I say we, that's me, it's the city staff, it's the council members, it's the community. We are working very collaboratively with Councilmember Luloi, who is representing his district very well, uh, by the way, um, on trying to lift up, um, some manufactured housing sites sooner rather than later. Sooner rather than later. Before the winter, before the winter, for Lexington, um, for Eleanor. And of course, Colfax is an opportunity for a safe parking site. We are also working with the staff and SHRA, and again, Councilmember Luloi, who has identified that the other half of the so-called Grove Site may, in fact, now be available to add due the capacity, uh, that we have to do, uh, manufactured housing on that already successful site. We are working with all members of the Regional Transit Board of Directors, especially our city representatives, to take before the RT Board an action item to approve at a minimum the Roseville Road Site sometime this month for safe parking, which has the, uh, potential to provide us hundreds of alternatives to the unsafe parking that is going on along Roseville Road, on Commerce Circle, uh, and in other parts of the city. We are working hard with the County of Sacramento to perfect the expansion of the North Fifth Street Shelter. That's not ultimately our call. We do need their sign up, to sign off, but we are working collaboratively. We're pushing hard because there's at least sixty additional beds that could be available tomorrow if we were to, uh, at, once we are able to obtain that approval. We are working diligently through the city manager's office with a major nonprofit, I'm not going to identify it here yet, for safe ground in a large, soon to be announced site. Councilmember Harris is continuing to, um, uh, finalize the implementation plans for Joshua's house. Madam City Attorney?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's okay. The press, of course, just reported, uh, Assemblymember McCarthy's successful effort in collaboration, again, with Councilmember Harris, myself, Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Desmond, to gain access to eight acres of land on Lot Z, uh, at, at the Cal Expo Fairgrounds that we can use for safe ground, tiny homes, and ultimately the potential for a campus. I know in talking to Councilmember Valenzuela today, she's working on many things, but there is the potential for a significantly expanded, large, safe ground site in her district that could, with, with the right kind of urgency, get, um, approved and done before, uh, the winter months. Councilmember Shenier, Vice Mayor Shenier, and his incredible work, uh, on the WX Shelter, it is up and running. There are some real challenges in terms of, uh, the, the security issues, the staffing issues, et cetera. But we are talking and he's talking to VOA and there is significantly short-term capacity or some short-term capacity that we can use, um, to potentially help people off the streets immediately. The same is true of the Meadowview Women's Shelter in South Sacramento. There are at least three that I know of pending a partial or a whole motel leases inside the city in addition to the State Bridge Hotel that we discussed today. There is a church in Councilmember Geddes District where he has pushed very hard, um, offering space for over thirty tiny homes, specifically thirty-six tiny homes. Councilmember Jennings, of course, is working on his safe parking site, uh, at the RT Station in his district. In the last two days, I have received entreaties, I would call them, because they're not formal offers, from two private sector property owners for respite and shelter. And one new public sector opportunity that the city manager and I are talking about. Again, not ready yet for prime time, but it could be relatively quickly. We have real timely and urgent opportunities before us. For if not all of these, if not all of these can be perfected over the next thirty to forty-five to sixty days, some of them can. I wanna talk about enforcement for a moment. I acknowledge the frustration, first of all, of the residents and the business communities who have had it up to here. And I also acknowledge the frustration of my council colleagues because I bear a lot of it, no doubt. But you bear at least as much, if not more. The daily calls, the emails, the frustration, the anger. And by the way, the city manager and his team bear the same level of anger and frustration. It's real and it's getting to a boiling point. And the city attorney is, you know, working creatively to, uh, gain us as many quote options as uh, as she can, as we can, to try to distinguish, for example, uh, health and safety versus, uh, v- versus living, um, private versus public property. I get all of that. Here is where I, and I'm one vote, I know it. But as the mayor, here's where I stand on enforcement. If the choice is between maintaining long-term unhealthy, unsafe and obtrusive tent encampments, encampments, especially on private property versus compassionately cleaning up the city, I choose a cleaner and a safer city, if I have to make that choice. That's me. I believe that there is no right for people to camp anywhere they want in the city. I am willing to push the boundaries of Martin V. Boise, which I know does not apply to private property, but applies to public property. Here is the equally important addendum to that opinion, and I feel this just as strongly. In any given situation, we should not and we must not make a decision to move people from where they are until we have made a focused, genuine and true effort to compassionately intervene with them and offer them a real alternative. We must link clean and safe, and even if it requires moving people, with presenting to the people, the neighborhood and the public, as many real alternatives as we can. They cannot be separate. They cannot be separate. They have to be linked together. I know, despite what some of you may think, I am not looking for a cure or for perfection. I'm not. That's not possible. But this is where the urgency of finalizing as many of these fifteen or so options that I laid out earlier. Some of them lie and ready now is so compelling. For there is tremendous pressure on you, on the city management, on me, on the city, to both help people and to clean up these encampments and to clean them up because no one should live like that. And the business community should not, and the business and the neighborhood corridor should not have to live like it or with it either. I believe that with a real ARP partnership with our county and those conversations continue, and our other partners, we never have to choose one or the other. But I also know, as I've acknowledged to the city manager and I will acknowledge to all of you, that we cannot sustain any of these aggressive efforts on our own. This is one-time money and the city cannot do this alone. But we have a hundred million dollars and a comprehensive siting plan and new sites on top of that comprehensive siting plan. And so what I call for is that now, and with every opportunity that we link strategically, morally and effectively, cleaning up and making more safe our city with navigating and offering people a safe and dignified alternative. If we get to a place where we can't ever present an alternative because the numbers are much larger than, than the alternatives, well, that may be a different question and a, and a time for a different kind of debate. But you members and you city staff spent untold numbers of hours with the community developing the siting plan. And you've been creative during that and since that in identifying more sites. Some of them are out of our control temporarily. Some of them are within our control. If we're gonna enforce even on private property, we must make the effort and communicate it that we are trying to navigate people out of that unsafe, unhealthy encampment into something better. Must at least try and demonstrate that. That's my point of view because there's a lot of, we all, there's a lot of talk. And, you know, I've given speeches on this, I gave a state of the city speech, I talked about right to housing and a legal obligation to take. And by the way, that's still coming forward, but this is roiling our city. And I wanted to be just very clear, um, where I stand, both on, uh, the progress of implementation, which I think I have such hope that we're about to break through, but we need to keep punching even a little bit harder and where I stand on the issue of enforcement. Thank you. Vice, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So one, one very quick comment is that I was able to cut a ribbon yesterday for a Fitlot, which is a kind of exercise facility for, for adults and seniors outdoors. The very cool, and it was partnership between Fitlot, AARP and the city. So I want to thank our city staff for, for working collaboratively with the folks at AARP and Fitlot. We are the only one in California of this type of facility or outdoor facility. But the very cool thing about it is it's at the Oak Park Community Center, right next to the children's playground. So this is an intergenerational piece where adults and seniors could, could get their exercise while they're watching their children or grandchildren play. So that's, that's great. I, I do want to do an adjourned memory here. We had the, we had the passing last week of Victor Brazelton. And for my council colleagues, you would remember Victor if you saw him or heard his incredible voice. He came to council many, many times and was, was not happy with, with a lot of the things that we did. But at the end of the day, I always found him to be incredibly articulate and someone who really loved Sacramento. And the things he said, I think, for the most part, ring true. It's, it's how we want to get there. So that was one kind of set of interactions I had with Victor that we all had with Victor, listening to him at the podium on a weekly basis, following the killing of Stefan Clark. The other, the other interaction I had with him, which was very, very different, was within the project that we have at our tree nursery. So we put out an RFP for someone to come in and, and create an urban agricultural center at the, at the tree nursery in Mangon Park. Victor was working with a group in Oakland called Planting Justice. And Victor actually, which I only learned a couple of nights ago at a memorial service for him, Victor actually wrote the proposal, the response to the RFP. We were all, I think, positively overwhelmed with it, with the work that they were doing. And Victor only wanted to take what Planting Justice was doing in Oakland, which is fabulous work, particularly with, with folks who had been involved with the penal system and came out. I think their, their numbers was, was one individual out of 50 went back to jail, which are really terrific numbers. But what, what Victor wanted was to bring the Planting Justice scope of work to our tree nursery. We are working on that. I want to thank Assemblymember Cooper. As we were talking this early today about monies being, coming to the city from the state, we got $2 million for the tree nursery. We have some funds from one private source that we'll be announcing soon. I will be, and am very, very sad that he will not see the fruition of his work. But we will keep him in our memories as we move forward. He, he was really a wonderful man. I learned a lot going to a memorial. I want to thank Black Lives Matter for putting it on. It was at McClatchy Park over the weekend. But again, he will be missed and we know that he truly loved this community and we will, we will do right by him as we go forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Harris?
Hi, yeah, Mayor, you know, actually, since we've already had an adjourned memory, you know, I had a thought about what you had discussed earlier, but I'll bring it up at the next council meeting.
Okay. Thank you so much.
I, I didn't, Jay, thank you for bringing that forward. Didn't he come one time, and Jeff, you'll probably remember, didn't he come one time wearing the turtle outfit during, when we were trying to save all the turtles, right? Remember that?
His assumption was, since we spent a million dollars on turtles, he wanted his million dollars. He did come.
And he wore a full-on turtle gear, right? He was, he really was a Sacramento voice and an advocate. What a, what a, what a terrible loss for our community. Thanks for, thanks for acknowledging, Jay.
Sure, 41 years old.
Too, way too young. Thank you.
Wow, way, way too young.
All right, members, thank you very much. Have a good evening and go Giants. We are adjourned.